Order. Ready. Cut. Cut. Freeze it. Shoulder. Cut. Port. Right. Forward.
I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Qureshi.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Smith is not with us tonight. He is representing the Tacoma Park City at the National League of Cities Conference. So we thank him for doing that and are sorry he can't be with us this evening. Our agenda tonight is a little different because tonight is a special evening. It is the last meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council that was with you since 2015, and we will have the swearing in of our new council. Before that, tonight, we do have agenda over here if you would like to take a look at it. We're -- one thing we're changing is that we have our Police Explorers who are with us this evening, and we're going to move them up on the agenda this evening so that they can get home on time. After that, we will have public comments on our one voting item this evening. Our voting item is the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 budget amendment two. After we vote on that, we will have council remarks for outgoing council members, adoption of minutes, and then introduction of our 2017-2018 youth council. After that, the current council will adjourn, and then we will have the swearing in of our new council. During the new council's meeting, we will have public comments on voting items, and those voting items are resolutions recognizing the contributions of our outgoing council members. So with that, we will start our meeting, and our first agenda item is the recognition of our Police Explorers. The reason we asked the Police Explorers to be with us this evening is because this city council, over the last two years, has put a high priority on building stronger relationships between the community and our police department. The re-inve- the re-inve -- I cannot say that word tonight. The re-establishment of our Explorer program is one of the ways that we've been doing that. The objective of the program is for young men and women to begin a foundation of becoming good citizens with a background in law enforcement by learning how -- learning honor, integrity, and leadership. The current group of Explorers have done just that. They have worked hard in both the classroom setting and as they have engaged in hands-on exercises to learn about policing. And they have represented the city with poise and professionalism at numerous festivals and parades. We hope that they serve as a model for others who may be interested in the Explorers program, and more importantly, that when they become a little bit older, that they seriously consider joining law enforcement profession, and that maybe someday we can see them on our own Tacoma Park Police Department. And now, I would like to present the Tacoma Park Police Explorers. Terrific. Thank you to the young Explorers, and also thank you to the Tacoma Park Police Color Guard who did the presentation of colors to open our meeting this evening. Now, we'll move on to public comments on our voting item, and I believe we were going to set up a microphone because we don't have our podium this evening.
All right.
We have -- does anyone have any public comments on our voting item, which is the FY 2018 budget amendment number two? All right. Seeing no public comments on that, we will move forward for the council vote on the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 budget amendment number two. I do not believe there were any changes since the first reading, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
It's moved.
I will say Councilmember Mayo moved, Councilmember Schultz second. Any discussion or questions regarding the ordinance? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll and take the vote.
Councilmember Qureshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Kovar.
No.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. Thank you. The ordinance passes. Now, we'll move on to council remarks. This is a time for our outgoing council members to give their remarks to the public, and I think we will start with Councilmember Schultz. Is that good with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay. We will start with you.
Uh-huh. Get your popcorn, folks. Yes. Well, thank you. Rizzi understands.
I do.
First, I want to -- there's a lot of things I want to say, but first, I want to thank my wife Nancy, my wife for 34 years, who I refer to as the First Lady of Ward Six. No one can possibly know what strength she's given to me and the anchor she has been for me through these years. And by the way, let me just ad lib here for a second because never once in all my time on the city council have I ever written down anything that I wanted to say. It has, in fact, always just been off the top of my head. This time, I want to get it right because I don't have a second chance to come back and repair anything. So let me continue. My being on the council was never Nancy's idea. She didn't know she had married a latent politician that suddenly decided to bloom after he had retired from a 40-year career. In fact, I was probably more surprised being -- by being in an election than she was. But Nancy understood why I wanted to take a leadership position in our town and why I wanted to try to be a difference maker. Through all the late nights, missed dinners -- she's nodding -- and hours glued to my laptop, she has stood by my side, encouraged me, but also helped me to keep my feet connected to the ground. She has also been my toughest constituent, asking questions and providing a second opinion and sometimes a third opinion. I am not kidding when I say "First Lady." Second, I owe thanks to all my neighbors in Ward Six who have trusted me to represent them. You chose to elect me four times in a row, so I'm deeply grateful for your support and your faith in me. My ego also says thanks. My favorite constituents are those that have the biggest needs and make the toughest arguments because they force me to do a better job. I get to know them, and resolving their issues offers a great deal of satisfaction. Third, it has been a privilege to be associated with the city staff. I had spent 22 years working for state, county, and city governments, so when I came to the council, I understood the challenges faced daily by our employees. Most of our people, as you know, are largely invisible to residents. I've worked alongside three city managers and two or three police chiefs, depending on how you count, and a bunch of acting chiefs. To all of you out there in TV land and in here tonight, I just want you to know that we are exceedingly fortunate to have such a highly competent workforce. To my mind, every single one of them should be given best-in-class blue ribbons. Now, I want to talk about some unfinished business. This is my last shot. There are four things that I think need special attention. Housing. We need to find a way to reduce and eliminate the many vacant and neglected houses in the city because these properties pose the biggest single threat to our neighborhoods. Still, others are occupied but in very poor shape. These owners need special help, unique to their circumstances. In 2014, I drafted a 20-page paper laying out an exact plan of how we can do this by creating a neighborhood investment corporation. At the time, it got little traction, but now that we have the strategic plan for housing and economic development, it may be time to reconsider. Second, we need to worry about Airbnbs. The county's newly passed laws regulating short-term rentals are a good first step, but these regulations are not fully compatible with Tacoma Park's situation. Third, in the area of economic development, we need to create a committee appointed by the council that represents the interests of property investors and business owners. While rent stabilization has proven its value unquestionably, our ordinance needs to be adjusted and updated in light of its -- of huge market forces pushing up property taxes. We must pay attention to our landlords. We can no longer afford to take them for granted. This economic development panel would look at a variety of things, like the personal property tax, ideas for a variable tax rate for commercial properties, bi-county coordination with Prince George's, helping small businesses cope with purple line construction, and a long list of other things. If we're going to do economic development in the city, we must have the city's business people involved in it. The OTBA and the CDA, the Crossroads Development Authority, are great organizations, but they are not set up for this kind of work. The soon-to-be-hired economic development specialist will need an efficient way to interact with the investment and business community throughout the city, not just in Old Town. An economic development advisory panel will be a perfect solution for this. It needs to be set up now. And last, I've long advocated for a creation of a city manager's fiscal advisory panel. This would be composed of a few residents experienced in city budget matters, and they would function as an intermediary to assist the city manager in explaining the budget to residents and building a bridge of trust and understanding among the -- about the content of our annual budget and how it works. There's always been too much confusion and misunderstanding. The budget document is often hard for even council members to grasp. Nothing is more complex, for example, than tax duplication. So those are the four major points. I just want to end by saying that I've been extremely proud to have served on the city council of this amazing city and to have had a chance to lead. It has been a wonderful, illuminating experience. I will miss working with the great men and women on this council and past councils, 13 in all that I've counted since I started in 2009. I have admiration, respect, and love for each one of them, most especially for Kay Daniels Cohen, who passed away in February 2014 while serving on this council. Including Jesse, Jason, and Suzie, it often feels like family up here. I'm excited about the three new council members who will be sworn into office in a few minutes. I'm confident they will do a bang-up job. I know that my successor, Talisha Seersey, in Ward Six, is chafing at the bit to get started. I simply want to get out of Talisha's way and let her have at it. May God bless the city of Tacoma Park and everyone. Love it. Love it.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Now, we'll hear from Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Welcome, everybody, tonight. I'm amazed at how many people we have.
Wonderful.
And glad, maybe, that I get to leave early. I'm going to read my remarks as well, and I first wanted to show everybody this nice award that I got from my neighborhood for serving on council, a little rooster, and it's a recycled Tacoma soccer award, so, you know, really putting back to the community. In 2011, at the time that I joined the council, I was actually the youngest member on this seven-member body. Today also happens to be my 47th birthday. Councilmember Smith is not here tonight. I am no longer the younger member on this -- member on this body, and I definitely wouldn't be on the new council, which is great. But I wanted to take the time to talk about some of the amazing things we've gotten done in just six years. These are things that I'm going to describe and that you might see up on the screens around you that we did together. So we, the 11 members of the council that I've served with, we, the 165 city staff, we, two business associations that the council supports, and innumerable nonprofits, businesses, and community partners, we, the 3,000 residents of Ward Two, and we, the 17,000 residents of Tacoma Park. In six years, we've transformed our elections, adding 16- and 17-year-olds, opening doors in apartment buildings so that renters can engage with us. Not only does Tacoma Park and Maryland not require IDs to vote, but in Tacoma Park, we now let people walk right in, register, and vote on the same day. We shifted the timing of our elections, which will mean that thousands more people vote in 2020, and that residents with names like Amir and Keisha and Lamberto will now vote side-by-side with the Howards and the Bills that currently dominate our city elections. Doing so required us to twice change our charter, which is the DNA of our city government, and in doing so, we guarantee that the future process of picking city governments will be more inclusive and just. In six years, we've reaffirmed Tacoma Park's environmental leadership and our focus on the quality of life of our people. We banned hormone-disrupting and cancer-linked pesticides. We protected bees and other pollinators. We banned plastic bags and polystyrene. We ensured that pipes leaking raw sewage got fixed. We recycled 500 tons of kitchen waste with a new kitchen composting program. We set up a new city park and became Maryland's first wildlife-friendly community. This effort was matched with some of the highest-in-the-nation commitments to actions on climate change, from building a climate plan to hiring a coordinator, to hundreds of energy audits, solar panels, and electric cars. I now look forward to the next council's chance to announce whatever our final status might be in the Georgetown Energy Prize. In six years, we've made measurable commitments to the lives of all residents, setting aside 650,000 for affordable housing on top of millions of assistance that's indirectly provided to renters through rent control. And we've also paid part of the assistance with property taxes that are forgiven throughout the city. We've provided hundreds of thousands in assistance to lower-income residents in single-family homes to improve their homes. And on top of all this, and with the city as a partner, more than 250 apartments have seen renovation, with more than $32 million in investments from outside partners, businesses, and banks. In six years, our roads are safer and our people are safer. Just in Ward Two, there are now new sidewalks on six streets and a seventh on the way. Just missed it. New crosswalks, new stop signs, new bike lanes and signage, snow angel -- excuse me, snow angels, now shovel driveways, and new crossing guards escort children across the street in Ward Two and Ward Three at the junction. Violent crime is down 7% in the six years that I've been on council and for which there's data available, and nonviolent crime is down 24%. We'll soon have a round-the-clock paramedic at our fire station and a new police chief to further strengthen our commitment to and partnerships with all residents. In six years, we've made great strides in prosperity. City property taxes are barely higher than when I first joined the city council, but while at the same time, county property taxes have gone up almost 40%. 34 new businesses now exist in Old Town, and that's a more than 40% increase in food and beverage services, places like Republic. We've expanded assistance to business associations, supported a community kitchen, transformed beer/wine-related laws, and set new standards to guide business growth on New Hampshire and University avenues, as Councilmember Schultz mentioned. Food trucks are now old, but they were new when I started, as is bike share, which helps residents get between all these businesses. And just in noting in passing, our schools also got bigger and better, while our families did, too. Looking back in a more personal way, I have too many thanks to give here, but especially to my partner, Winnie, without whose sacrifices and willingness to take on a burden I passed to her, my time in council would not have been possible. And my children, Zoe and Finn, and since they are here, I'm going to make them stand up in the middle of the room there. Zoe and Finn, who grew up too fast and saw less of me and I of them than I would have liked between answering emails and being at these and other meetings. Thank you. My thanks to my first campaign manager, Abe Safer, and my first supporter, former city councilwoman, Colleen Clay, whose mentorship was of immense value, and to my then-opponent and now-friend, Loriek Tracudian, who made me a better person through the race we ran together. My thanks to all my colleagues, but especially to former mayor Bruce Williams and current mayor Kate. I'll just say Kate because I can do that now. Without whose willingness to support or at least schedule agenda items, little of the above and what you see on the screens around you would have been possible. I've learned a great deal from each of you and made friendships that I will cherish. Thank you.
Love it.
Looking ahead, my best wishes to my current colleagues who remain on council and to the new council members who will be up here soon for your next years. I'm excited by what you're going to do, together with everyone in the city and for our city. And I'll close with some broader remarks from a national context. I worked at the White House for the -- for two and a half years fairly recently until about January. And we all know why that transition happened. So almost a year ago in January, as my honor at serving in the White House was ending, I had the privilege of being at Andrews Air Force Base for former President Obama's last remarks. And he said at the time that, you know, thinking about our history, that this is a period and not a comma. I'm sorry. This is a -- this is not a period. This is a comma. He's way more eloquent than I am. But I'll ask -- actually leave you with the closing words of another former president, George H.W. Bush, and he said in his last State of the Union address, and the same, I think, still applies today and inspires me, "There's a mood among us. People are worried. Moods come and go, but greatness endures. Ours does. And maybe for a moment, it's good to remember what in the daily routine of our lives we forget. We are still and ever will be the freest nation on earth, the kindest nation on earth, the strongest nation on earth. We have always risen to the occasion, and we are going to lift this nation out of hard times inch by inch and day by day, and those who would stop us had better step aside." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I did not write my remarks down, so.
No popcorn.
Yeah. I, like my colleagues, want to start off by thanking my family. I work, like all of us up here do, I think, in most respects, work a very rigorous, full-time job, and then there's this job, so Talisha, Cindy, Casey, good luck. And you can't do these things. You can't serve your community. There's a lot of things you can't do in your life unless you have support from those who love you and those who put up with you, honestly. And tonight, my beautiful wife Kelly's here, and my son Leo, who's three, and Lila, who's six. Leo, I asked him what he wants me to say at my last city council meeting. He said fire trucks, police cars, and ambulances. And Lila told me to say, "You're the best person ever," so. But Lila and Leo, I'm going to be at home on Wednesday nights now, so maybe Mom can get a little break, but I really appreciate -- you can't do a lot of these things if you don't have the support, and luckily, I'm very blessed in that respect. I've also had the privilege of serving alongside some great people. Each of these people up here, I mean, Peter Kovar and I started together. He's kind of like my freshman-year roommate, you know? We're going to have a bond of learning on the jo --
Get that stuff off the floor.
Yeah. We learned on the job together, and it is an uphill battle at times, but I appreciate his guidance, always, his thoughtfulness. Jared, who's not here, has been, at least most recently, been instrumental for us at the Maryland Municipal League as a member of the Legislative Committee. He has kept this body up to date on things that are going on in Annapolis where we chime in when relevant, and I appreciate his contribution. Tim, who is my basically lifeline on everything environmental, has been a real mentor to me and has advised me and taught me so much over these last two years. And in a person like him, I think, you know, the city and his ward are losing a great advocate, but he's not going anywhere, and I hope he continues public service. Terry is somebody that just keeps me laughing. See, you know, you guys think we're always working up here. We're sending text messages. We're talking about stuff, and it's only just keep the night going and sort of staying focused on the issues but also keeping it lighthearted. And I think I've always appreciated Terry and his wonderful wife, Joyce, who's been --
Love it.
I mean, they're embodied Tacoma Park with their dedication to our community. Fred, when Kate assigned the seats up here initially, I thought she sat me next to Fred because it was punishment.
All right.
Hey, no, no.
Wait, just one moment.
See what I mean? Look what he's about to do. So I remember -- I remember when I came to my first council meeting and Fred was up here saying something. I was -- this was year -- three years ago, four years ago, and I was like, there's this -- I came home and I was like, Kelly, there's this guy Fred on the council, like, I mean, he's hilarious, but, you know, they need some young blood on the council. And it's unbelievable to be Fred. I've sat next to you for the last two years, and I'm going to miss you dearly. I love you. You are one of the most thoughtful advocates on a myriad of issues. I've learned so much from you, and I'm really going to miss you, but we're going to go to the breweries every Wednesday night, so if anybody's looking for us, that's where we'll be. Yeah. I said I was going to be at home. You're right, Jason. I guess I'll have to deal with my wife on that.
Thank you very much.
Last, in terms of our colleagues, is Kate Stewart. She is a tireless advocate for our community. We are so blessed to have her, and we are so blessed that We are so blessed to have her, and we are so blessed that she ran again and decided to do this job again. Each of these people are my friends, and Kate I consider my friend. Tacoma Park, you're in good hands with Kate Stewart, I promise you.
Love it.
And she gives so much for our community, I've learned so much from her, and I'm going to miss her dearly too, but I'm going to be sending all kinds of funny texts while you're sitting here at night. Another thing that I just wanted to raise and thank is our city staff. Susie Ludlow runs the tightest ship that I've ever come across, and despite what you've gone through this year, Susie, and just these last two years, I've been amazed and gained so much appreciation for what this city is. And if you get behind the scenes on this city and you have the privilege to serve your community and you get to work hand-in-hand with our city staff, you realize why you live in such a great city. And it's a testament to Susie Ludlow's leadership. Her right-hand man, Jason Dan Weber, is also somebody that deserves a round of applause. Are you clapping for yourself?
It seemed like you were.
And I've already spoken at length about Jesse Carpenter, who the city wouldn't even... Wouldn't even... I mean, Jesse was actually, maybe, well, a lot of people don't know this, the first person I talked to when I was thinking about running, I think even before my wife, was Jesse Carpenter. And I was on the Board of Elections, and I was like, Jesse, what do you think about this? Do you think I should do it? That conversation will remain confidential. The other group of people that I want to just thank are department heads, Daryl Braithwaite, Sarah Danes, among others, but also our Tacoma Park Police Department. I'm a prosecutor by day, I'm a minority prosecutor at the U.S. Attorney's Office in D.C. There's not a lot of people who look like me on the law enforcement side as lawyers, and I can tell you that there is a movement in the country right now that's very critical of our police departments, and in many respects, it's warranted. But our police department, to me, has been so responsive and willing to adapt to what are the values of this community, to increase recruitment of all different elements and demographics of our community, and they're willing to change, they're willing to learn, and they're right there for you. And I think, you know, we talk about taxes and we talk about these things, which are important things to talk about, but I don't think anybody wants to do away with our police department. And that also is a testament to Susie's leadership and the three captains who are operating as acting chiefs, Frishkorn Bowers and Collington, I think they deserve a round of applause as well because...
Love it.
Before I forget, I just want to raise two more things. I want to congratulate specifically the candidates who ran and who weren't successful this time. Ashley Nugent, Joe Edgell, Amy Byrne, Jason Small... Did I forget anybody? Okay. I... It's hard. It's hard to campaign, it's money out of your own pocket, you have to ask people for donations in this small little town for a very short campaign season, and then to work that hard, put everything out there, including your family and yourself, and to not come out on top, is tough and it's heartbreaking. And I think each of those people should know that I, as a resident of Tacoma Park, as a city council member who ran unopposed, would have gladly run against all three or four of them and would have gladly... I think we would have been in good hands had I not prevailed, because it's a reflection of our community that you have people so dedicated who are willing to serve, and I hope that they're not discouraged and their supporters aren't discouraged and remain engaged in city politics. My focus has always been, since I came up here, is to move towards a more inclusive government. A lot of you aren't here every single Wednesday, you should try, but a lot of the same people here are here every Wednesday. And to me, it's always been about the people who can't make it here, who aren't here, who don't have the ability to be here, who have childcare issues, who work two or three jobs, who have all kinds of obligations that prevent them from not only coming here but not even realizing that frankly we exist and that we are a body that has more of an impact on your daily life and work hard to positively impact your daily life than any state, federal or national candidate or politician can do for you. My focus has been on young people. I have two young kids, this community continues to grow with young people, we're about to swear in our youth council, and one accomplishment that I think that this council needs to be proud about is, and I know it's controversial amongst some, is that we are going to renovate and expand our library in our city so that it can address the needs of our growing young population, of our elderly population, and our teens, who I think should be able to go to the library that's within a stone's throw of their school where they're walking home from. This experience has allowed me to engage and meet constituents from all different parts of the city that I didn't know existed, frankly, and I urge folks to consider running for public office to experience what I have. This has been a tough year politically, as Councilmember Mail has raised with his transition, but this council, I hope people recognize, has been focused on ensuring that no matter what the national trends are of intolerance and just straight negativity, that we have done everything in our power to not allow those things to replicate within our community. And I urge the future council to similarly keep that in mind. You know, we talk about how we're a small town of 15,000 to 17,000, but you have some of the smartest people in the world living in Tacoma Park with the most resources and knowledge on issues, and I hope that you tap into that. Casey, Talisha, and Cindy, I wish you all three the best of luck. It is, I apologize, it's eight o'clock and there's kids here, but it is so badass that we're going to have a majority female council.
Love it.
And I hope that you all know that Fred, Tim, and I will always be here for you if you need anything. Wednesday nights, maybe not, but we're here for you. And finally, I would just like to thank Ward Three. Ward Three is... What is it, buddy? Ward Three?
Ward Three rocks.
Yeah.
More rules.
I want to just say one last thing, and this is a tradition amongst Muslims, before you go on the pilgrimage, the hudge, is the first thing you do is you reach out to everybody you know and you say, "If there is anything that I have done to offend you, to hurt you, to make you feel smaller than you really are, for that I apologize." And I want to say that to Ward Three residents and Tacoma Park residents, that I have always taken this job seriously in a thoughtful way, I'm leaving here with a clear conscience, but I ask for your forgiveness if there's something that I have done to wrong you or that you may have unintentionally assumed that I was wronging you. And I believe Ward Three is in great hands with Casey Kostyak, and I think you all should call her now, don't call me. And for anybody who wants to apologize to me, I'll be outside at the reception. Thank you very much.
Love it.
Thank you to our outgoing council members. For those of us who will remain on council, we'll have our comments in the next meeting. Now, we'll move to the adoption of minutes on November 1st. Would someone like to move the adoption of the minutes? So, Councilmember Schultz moved, Councilmember Mail second. Any changes or questions on the minutes? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now, our final item for this council is the introduction of our 2017-2018 Youth Council. I will read out the names. I ask that our Youth Council members please come here, because we'd like to have you shake hands with each of the council members, and we'll take a picture. Althea Davy, George Ashford, Adelaide Harris, Asha Henry, Emma Morgenstein, Rachel Group, Kiran Kochhar McCabe, Adam Kante, and Erica Rijos.
Love it.
And we have Mr. Garing, who has offered to take on the role as interim... Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I knew you had to.
Congratulations. Well, just stay up there, we're going to take a picture.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Congrats.
Where do you want us?
Look at this way. Here we go. Wonderful. Thank you.
Are you guys going to take a picture?
Sure. I'll leave my hat behind.
Come on now. Come over here.
Great. Everybody just push in tight. All right. Here we go. One, two, three. And give it one more. Wonderful. Thank you guys so much.
Love it.
city council. It is to provide an opportunity for youth in Tacoma Park to acquire greater knowledge of and appreciation of our local government and to serve as a council to this city council, informing us of the needs and wants of the youth in our community. We are so excited to have this Youth Council begin, and we want to say especially thank you to Mr. Garing and all the students who helped put together the charter for this Youth Council.
Love it.
And with that, we will adjourn this council meeting for this city council for the last time. Thank you.
Love it.
Yes. All right, but stay seated, because then we're going to swear everybody in. You want to get one more picture for this council?
Yeah, let's do it. I have one mess here.
Do you want to get one more picture? Oh, yes, he is. Just a quick picture.
Yes, it's waiting.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Love it.
You're right here.
I'll say aye, you say aye, you'll say your name, and then you continue. I?
Aye. Kate Stewart?
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful?
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance?
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland?
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution?
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof?
And that I will?
And that I will?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution?
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Love it. And you're all done?
I'm all done.
Awesome.
You're all done.
All right. All right. Let's see, I'm Peter Kovar first. There you go. All right, ready? Raise your right hand. And say aye and then repeat your name, okay? Aye?
Aye, Peter Kovar.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution?
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Love it. Love it, Kate.
Love it, Kate.
Nice cap tan.
Yeah. All right. Awesome. And you're all done.
I'm all done.
Awesome.
You're all done.
All right. All right. Let's see, I'm Peter Kovar first. There you go. All right, ready? Raise your right hand. And say aye and then repeat your name, okay? Aye?
Aye, Peter Kovar.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park?
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution?
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Love it. Love it, Kate.
Love it, Kate.
Nice cap tan.
Yeah. All right. Awesome. And you're all done.
I'm all done.
Awesome.
You're all done.
All right. All right. Let's see, I'm Peter Kovar first. There you go. All right, ready? Raise your right hand. And say aye and then repeat your name, okay? Aye?
Aye, Peter Kovar.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Councilmember Ward Two?
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Two.
According to the Constitution and laws?
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state?
Of this state.
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park?
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
Love it. 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 And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
According to the Constitution and laws.
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
There you go, you're it. You got signed. Not official to be signed.
Love it.
Where's Casey? I say aye, you say aye, and then your name. Ready?
Aye. Casey Kostic.
Do you swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
According to the Constitution and laws.
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
All right, now you just have to sign here.
I got a pen?
Yep. Cindy here.
Thanks, guys.
Raise your right hand. And repeat, I'll say aye, you say aye, and then say your name. Aye.
Aye, Cindy DiBalla.
Do you swear.
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
Execute the office of council member Ward 2.
According to the Constitution and laws.
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
There you go, you're it. You got signed. Not official to be signed.
Love it.
Where's Casey? I say aye, you say aye, and then your name. Ready?
Aye. Casey Kostic.
Do you swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 3.
Execute the office of council member Ward 3.
According to the Constitution and laws.
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations.
Love it. Love it, love it, love it. Yeah, Joyce, thank you, we love it. Love it, love it. You too, Terry and Joyce, we love you.
Repeat after me, aye, and then say your name. Ready?
Aye. Talisha Circe.
Do you swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my judgment and skill.
To the best of my judgment and skill.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 6.
Execute the office of council member Ward 6.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations.
Love it.
Raise your right hand. Say aye and then your name. Ready?
Aye, Terry Siemens.
Do you swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my judgment and skill.
To the best of my judgment and skill.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member Ward 6.
Execute the office of council member Ward 6.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the City of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations. All right, now you gotta come up here and sit up here. To order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe. Here.
Great, thank you very much, and Councilmember Smith is still at the National League of Cities Conference. Our first item for the new council is, we have two proclamations, one is naming the mayor pro temp, and the other is to recognize Municipal Government Works Week. So, the first is the appointment of Mayor Pro Temp. The Mayor Pro Temp is the person who, if the mayor is unavailable to be here or to be of service to the city, takes her place. And this year, as I had in the past, I have asked Councilmember Siemens to be the city council's mayor pro temp. And he has accepted. Our second proclamation this evening is recognizing the month of November as Municipal Government Works Month, and so we'll recognize that. Next, we will take public comments on voting items. The voting item this council has this evening are resolutions recognizing the contributions of Councilmember Mail, Koreshi, and Schultz. We have a microphone here, so if anyone has any comments they would like to make this evening in recognition of those council members, they can do so now. Okay? Seeing none, then we will move on to council remarks. So, if any council... My board is not working tonight, so just wave your hand if you'd like to speak. And who would like to speak first? Councilmember Kovar, you can speak first.
I would defer to the Mayor Pro Temp since he's most senior.
Would you like to speak first?
I will.
You have to turn on your light because I can't do it today.
Oh, okay. Wow, what a change. I think this is the biggest change that I've seen in the council since I first joined the council back in 1999. They have so many people changing seats. You know, we're gonna talk about individual council members who have departed later. But I would just like to say goodbye to the three of you. I'm really gonna miss all three of you. You've been major contributors through the last few years. And as Councilmember Schultz said, you know, it's part of the family, and so I look forward to having all three of you continue pushing your ex-colleagues to do what's right for the city and bringing your opinions and ideas to us. As we move forward with the new council, I'd like to welcome my new colleagues and offer you whatever assistance I can give you as you step in. I know that when I first joined the council, it was kinda scary because you just got what you asked for. And yet, you're not sure what that really means. And so, all I can say is if there's anything that you want to talk about or that I can help you with, you know, just give me a call. And I also, I look forward to having new colleagues on the council because I still have a lot to learn, and I know that I can learn from you too. So, I look forward to working with you. And then, lastly, I'd just like to thank the people who put me back here for another term, the people of Ward 4. I'd like to thank my wife Joyce, and of course, our peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, Gladys Harvey, and Norman Ridgeway, Susan Hartley, and Janet Williams, all Ward 4 residents who have been very supportive of me and helpful, not just through the campaign, but through my time here in this... Thank a few people who are not Ward 4 residents, but also have been very helpful, and I'll not use their last names so they don't get in trouble with their council member, but Jackie Sherwanda, there's one you can't figure out, right?
He's not here tonight.
Joyner and Luke, also been very supportive, and I thank them. So, thank you very much, and look forward to the new term.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to do a few thanks first as well. I'll thank my wife Paula, who was a great advisor and campaign planner and supporter and all those things, and unfortunately, she can't be here tonight, but maybe I'll make her watch the TV coverage later. And my family who don't live around here, but were also very supportive. There's a lot of people who nominated me and hosted parties and put up yard signs and were willing to talk to me when I was knocking on the door and had other conversations with me, and helped out on Election Day, and I'm not gonna mention all the different names, but that was, all those things had to happen in order for the campaign to work, so I really appreciate that. And I do want to mention the staff, including especially Jesse and the other city staff and the Election Day workers and the Board of Elections too, because, you know, it was a really long rainy day. I was there for like 13 hours, but I think they were there a couple hours in advance, and then they stayed afterward to count, so they pretty much worked the whole day. And they were inside, but they still worked the whole day, so we appreciate it. I appreciate that, and I do want to thank all my fellow council members for the support and advice that they provided over the last two years. Most of all, though, I do want to support the voters in Ward 1, and you know, I just made a little note here, we have four former council members on Maple Avenue alone, plus a US Congressman and two at-large council members, so I'm kind of like a small, you know, a small cog in an influential bunch of people in the ward, so it's been great to get a chance to interact with all of those people. I'm not gonna talk a lot about issues tonight because we'll deal with that later, but I did want to just say a couple of things about the outgoing council members. I don't know if Fred's still here, but Fred never wrote anything down, I didn't realize that. But Fred has been great on economic development issues and sort of neighborhood quality of life issues in particular, been a real leader on that and has helped me to understand that. For Tim Mail, really understanding the importance of digging into budget and financial issues and understanding that so that we can better serve the people in the community, I really appreciate that, as well as his leadership on the environment. And for Rizzi Koreshi, you know, it's great to have a lawyer around. When I worked in the government for 30, federal government for 30 years, I always thought that it was great to have lawyers, but the politics sort of, in the end, would overcome what the lawyers wanted, but Rizzi had a nice combination of both of those things, and was a real moral compass from first when he arrived and throughout, so having them here was really great, and working with them, and I hope to continue to talk to them. For the newly-elected people, I'm just gonna say a couple of things. The mayor and I and others were talking about this beforehand, but there was a big event yesterday for Sheila Hickson, our longtime state senator, and she announced that she's not going to be running for reelection after however many decades she'd been there. And one of the speakers was Brian Frosch, our Attorney General, but he related the story when he was a state delegate first elected, and Sheila was the person he was assigned to, and she said that the only advice, he said the only advice she gave him was to shut up, so we don't expect that here.
And listen, and listen, listen.
Shut up and listen, okay, but maybe I didn't listen to that part, but we don't expect the new people to shut up here, we want them to participate. But what really came through, and the thing about Sheila, and the event, and what everybody said was, she was incredibly effective and a great representative of the people in District 20, but she did it while she was nice, and so I think this is the thing that I think is really important to keep in mind, you can be effective and still be nice, and I think we all have to try to do that. You know, despite all this hoopla, we're not really big shots, even though it might seem like we are, we're just regular folks in our ward. And I'm just gonna mention two really brief things about that, and then I'm just about to wrap up, okay? In the article that The Post ran after the election, they had a little coverage of this, of our election, and there was a great part that said, "Two incumbents in Tacoma Park who were uncontested will be joined," and we didn't get our names even mentioned, so that kind of gives you an idea. And then the second thing, and this is from the summer, from June 30th, it's a CNN thing, but they were talking about, and really, it could be any one of Donald Trump's tweets, but this one was about Joe Scarborough and Mika Brzezinski, and they asked this congressman, a GOP congressman, what he thought about the comments, and he said, "That's a tweet that's not even becoming of a city councilman." So, you can sort of see what people around the country think about us, but we really are nicer here most of the time, and I just want to emphasize, and I've said this before, but this is really important, when we get into some of the issues we're getting into, it's not, it's for people out there and for people up here, we don't want to fall into this unnecessarily divisive kind of approach that we see nationally, and I think generally we've resisted that, and I think it's really important that we continue to resist that, so I'll stop there and thank you, and welcome to the new people, and thanks to the people supporting.
Great, awesome. I will now turn to my new colleagues, would anyone like to say a few words?
I'm kind of like a small, you know, a small cog in an influential bunch of people in the ward, so it's been great to get a chance to interact with all of those, all those people. I'm not going to talk a lot about issues tonight because we'll deal with that later, but I did want to say a couple of things about the outgoing council members. I don't know if Fred's still here, but Fred never wrote anything down? I didn't realize that. But Fred has been great on economic development issues and sort of neighborhood quality of life issues in particular, been a real leader on that and has helped me to understand that. For Tim Mail, really understanding the importance of digging into budget and financial issues and understanding that so that we can better serve the people and the community, I really appreciate that as well as his leadership on the environment. And for Rizzi Caressi, you know, it's great to have a lawyer around. When I worked in the government for 30, federal government for 30 years, I always thought that it was great to have lawyers, but the politics sort of in the end would overcome what the lawyers wanted, but Rizzi had a nice combination of both of those things and was a real moral compass from first when he arrived and throughout, so having them here was really great and working with them, and I hope to continue to talk to them. For the newly elected people, I'm just going to say a couple of things. The mayor and I and others were talking about this beforehand, but there was a big event yesterday for Sheila Hickson, our longtime state senator, and she announced that she's not going to be running for reelection after however many decades she'd been there. And one of the speakers was Brian Frosch, our attorney general, but he related the story when he was a state delegate first elected and Sheila was the person he was assigned to, and she said that the only advice, he said the only advice she gave him was to shut up. So we don't expect that here.
And listen, and listen, listen.
Shut up and listen, okay. Maybe I didn't listen to that part, but we don't expect the new people to shut up here. We want them, we want them to participate. But what really came through and the thing about Sheila was, in the event, and what everybody said was, she was incredibly effective and a great representative of the people in her, in District 20, but she did it while she was nice. And so I think this is the thing that I think is really important to keep in mind. You can be effective and still be nice, and I think we all have to try to do that. You know, despite all this hoopla, we're not really big shots, even though it might seem like we are. We're just regular folks in our ward. And I'm just going to mention two really brief things about that, and then I'm just about to wrap up, okay? In the article that The Post ran after the election, they had a little coverage of this, of our election, and there was a great part that said, "Two incumbents in Tacoma Park who were uncontested will be joined." And we didn't get our names even mentioned, so that kind of gives you an idea. And then the second thing, and this is from the summer, from June 30th, it's a CNN thing, but they were talking about, and really it could be any one of Donald Trump's tweets, but this one was about Joe Scarborough and Mika Brzezinski, and they asked this congressman, a GOP congressman, what he thought about the comments, and he said, "That's a tweet that's not even becoming of a city councilman." So you can sort of see what people around the country think about us, but we really are nicer here most of the time. And I just want to emphasize, and I've said this before, but this is really important when we get into some of the issues we're getting into. It's not, it's for people out there and for people up here, we don't want to fall into this unnecessarily divisive kind of approach that we see nationally. I think generally we've resisted that, and I think it's really important that we continue to resist that. So I'll stop there and thank you, and welcome to the new people, and thanks to the people supporting.
Great. Awesome. I will now turn to my new colleagues. Would anyone like to say a few words? How about the councilwoman from Ward 3?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I just want to say I'm really excited and honored and humbled to be up here, and I want to take a few moments to thank people who've helped me along the way. And starting off with my predecessor, Rizzi Caressi, I have been really grateful to you for your service in this position, and I've watched consistently over the past two years your insightfulness and really thoughtful consideration of the issues, and I've really appreciated that and your strong desire, which you talked about tonight, to bring people into the conversation and perspectives that have not always been on the forefront, and I think that has been a great contribution. So thank you. I also want to thank outgoing members, Tim Mail and Fred Schultz. Again, I've watched both of you on the council for several terms, and I really appreciate your leadership and the things that you've been able to accomplish on the council. Looking at my own campaign, I want to take a moment to thank the people who helped me, my supporters and volunteers, people who helped out with door knocking, with the street festival, with flyers, with accounting, with photos and various other things. I want to thank all of them for their support and encouragement. I want to thank my family, my parents for their inspiration, my mother-in-law for her encouragement and her babysitting services many times so that I can do things like this. I want to thank my husband, who is in the back here taking pictures, and for his photography, but also more importantly, for all of his support. He has never questioned me when I have come up with things I've considered doing, from wanting to go work abroad in Russia for a while, well, soon after we were married, to wanting to be on the city council, and I'm really grateful to him for all of his support. I also want to thank my two children, Peter and Alex, who are at home sleeping right now, but have been very enthusiastic and patient throughout this process, and it's been wonderful for me to see this process in their eyes and what they're learning through it. And speaking of that, I also want to call out the youth council tonight, speaking of young people who want to be engaged and are learning about the process. I hope that we can have a really great relationship with the youth council and we can learn a lot from you. I hope that you know that this is not just, you know, we want to give you guys an opportunity to do something. This is really, we want to hear from you and we want your feedback, and I hope that you recognize that and you give that to us and you push us sometimes if there are things that we need to hear. I also want to call out the candidates who ran for election and were not elected. They, as Rizzi said earlier, they put a lot into these races and they really generated a lot of enthusiasm in the, in the community, and I think they brought out a lot of new great ideas, and so I hope that all of them will continue to be active in the community and that we can continue to hear from them in the future. I also want to thank the voters in Ward 3 who came out on a rainy day, a cold and rainy day in an uncontested election to show their support. I am really grateful to that. I'm really grateful to the people who have talked with me about their concerns and their ideas in the ward, and I hope we can continue to have those conversations. I also want to note the people who are not here and who are not watching on TV, and I want to encourage them and let them know that I am here for them as much as I am here for the other people who are as active, and I, I'm going to make it a point to reach out to them and have that be a goal of mine. Turning to my new colleagues, I want to thank Mayor Stewart, Councilmember Smith, who's not here, Councilmember Kovar, and Councilmember Siemens for your service and, and your help as well as the help of the outgoing council members to me in providing some sense of what to expect on the council as we've had these discussions. I'm really looking forward to working with you, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Dibala and Councilmember Circe. I'm looking forward to working with you and kind of learning this process along with you. So I'm really excited to get started, and I just want to thank all of you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe?
Wow, this is very humbling and kind of weird. So first, I just want to say thank you so much to the residents of Ward 6. This has been an enlightening and humbling experience for me. I don't take the trust that you've placed in me with your votes lightly, and will do my best to ensure that I'm serving the needs of the residents of Ward 6. I want to particularly thank my family as well for pounding pavement, knocking on doors, standing out in the rain, campaign manager Carolyn for also pounding pavement, sending emails, knocking on doors, all of my supporters. It has been such a relief to know that the efforts and the labor was not in vain and that there is a number of folks in the community who supported me and supported my run. Also want to thank Jason Small, the other candidate for Ward 6, learned through the process that we have, that there's a very clear path that lies ahead for Ward 6. It was presented in the issues that both he and I presented, and so now will be the time to engage Ward 6 residents, but also the rest of the city of Tacoma Park, to really focus on the issues that, that impact us all. The rec center redevelopment, the Purple Line, all of those things, so they're going to impact all of our daily lives. Last but not least, I want to thank Fred Schultz. Fred knocked on my door when I first moved in to New Hampshire Gardens, and he said, "I'm Fred. I'm your city council member." And I was like, "All right, Fred, I got a problem. I got this tree stumped in my front yard, and I need to figure out how to get rid of it." He will leave some very large shoes to fill. Fred not only was an advocate for the community and the residents of Ward 6, but he also served as a mentor to me in my role as president of the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association. He always slowed me down a little bit when I was ready to set fire to get stuff done. He's like, "Talisha, hold off a little bit." So I value your mentorship. Nancy, I value the support that the two of you have given me over the years and served as a sounding board and really nurtured my desire to help. I also want to thank Rizzi as well as Tim. I think I probably reached out to you, Rizzi, soon enough to wonder how on earth did you have that full-time federal job while, while doing this too, as well as Tim? But, you know, folks may not realize, prior to running, I know I personally sent emails to a number of sitting, sitting council members and asked about how to do this, what to expect, and everyone's so open and responsive, and it just really makes me feel like this is, this is a family where we're all of, we may not always agree on the path forward, but we all have a desire to improve and enhance the city of Tacoma Park. The city staff, super responsive, always available, even when I get stuck on Metro and have to show up after 6:30, available, willing to serve, and, and so I'm excited. I'm excited about this opportunity. I'm excited to work with all of you all. It's going to be a steep learning curve, but I feel that I'm in such great company in terms of my colleagues, the new members, but also those that have served quite a few times. You know, it's going to take all of us together to get up to speed, but also to tackle the challenges that lie ahead, and so I'm excited. I'm thankful, I'm humbled, and I don't think I have anything else left to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
There we go. What they said. I'm, I'm honored to be given this opportunity to serve as a council member, and, and I hope that I can continue to earn your confidence and your trust and do you all proud. I want to thank Tim for your example for the last four years. It can be a tough act to follow, and I want to celebrate, I want to applaud all the people in Ward 2 who came out. The energy and enthusiasm in this election was awesome, and I think one of the first challenges is how do we continue to engage you all and, and provide opportunities for you to continue to participate in our local democracy? I want to thank all the neighbors who came out and voted and worked for a candidate or were a candidate themselves, and of course, a special shout out to the people who supported me. But it, it was an amazing experience to be part of that whole process, and I, I really hope we can continue to, to tap into that enthusiasm and that energy. And I'm really eager to be part of this new team, and so sure, it's a new team, but I'm not sure the challenges have changed in the last 10 or 15 minutes. And I'm really eager to be part of this and very excited to work with all of you, old and new, and to draw on the experience of those of the three of you who are sitting out there thinking you're going to get a break now. You're wrong. I've got your number. So with, with that, I'll just say I'm looking forward to the next three years.
Great. Thank you. All right. I'll just add my, my thank you to everyone who attended this evening, and I want to thank my family and friends, in particular, my family that tried to sneak out, but I wanted to come back in so I could thank them. Oh, and also to Lysia and particularly to Grace also, who needs to get home. Thank you so much to everything you've done over the past few months, and Grace, thanks for lending me your mom for a while. I really appreciate it. And I also need to thank my mother-in-law, who also, my kids are a little older, didn't need babysitting, but we needed food and, and running around and taxi service, and so she definitely provided that over these last few months, and not even just these few months, as everyone has said up here, to do this job and to do this job well, it is not just us here individually. It takes, it really does take our families, it takes our close friends, you know, it takes people like Doris to our day, it takes Gladys, it takes folks like Jeff Trunzo and all the people who support us and are there for us. So I thank all of you for everything you do. So this is really an exciting time in our city's history. We're entering a new time. I want to thank, as others have, those who ran this past election. It takes a lot to put yourself out there, to put your family out there, and people really got engaged this past election, and it stimulated conversations about issues and concerns, and I want to thank everyone for doing that. And now is a time for us to come together, not just as a council, but as a community, to work on behalf of all the residents, and we sure do have a lot of work ahead of us. The next three years, because this council is here for three years, our next election will be in 2020, it's going to be exciting time for us, and we're going to face challenges and opportunities. The Purple Line is coming. That will create opportunities and challenges for us. Population is growing in this region, and we need to face that. We need to think about how we're going to keep housing affordable and keep our community the way we want to have it and to reflect our values. We're going to need to decide policies and to establish programs and policies to mitigate the impact of these great changes that are coming on our residents and our businesses because we want them to thrive as well and to stay here in our communities, and we need to make sure that we take advantages of these changes. We're going to work on and build on the work of past councils. We're going to get together right away, and that library renovation is going to start, and that's very exciting. We have a Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan that I hope people were able to attend the open houses, but if you weren't, please provide more feedback on that because that's one of the first things this council is going to take up. As well as, we're going to start implementing our racial equity framework, and many of us on the council and the city staff are going to be in an all-day retreat on December 1st, learning about ways that we can better implement this racial equity framework. And as Councilmember Mail said, "We are not immune to what happens at the national level. We will continue to stand up for our values and resist those who are focused on spreading hate and bigotry and dismantling protections to our environment, health, and safety. We will, and we are, and we will continue to be a sanctuary city, and we will continue to be a welcoming and inclusive community. We will remain committed to our environmental sustainability and uphold the Paris Climate Agreement because we are still in." Our city has a long track record of providing and protecting for our most vulnerable and assisting those in needs, and we'll continue to build on that foundation because when people are empowered, our community thrives. I'm very fortunate to serve our city and excited about starting with the new colleagues. This is only the second time in the history of the city that we've had a majority of women on the city council, and it's exciting to do that. In my first term as mayor, I promised to strive to reach out, show up, and listen, and I continue to promise to do that over the next three years. And frankly, it's a bit selfish because that's the part of the job I like the most, is when we're actually not sitting up here, but we're out in the community, because that's when we see what is working well in our community and what we need to do better. And so I thank you all. I've learned so much over these last two years from the residents of the city, and I look forward to learning even more from you all. We're very fortunate to be elected at this time in our city's history. We have amazing community of engaged residents, and we have, as others have said, a terrific city staff, and it is an honor to work with each and every one of you, so thank you. And I know my colleagues sitting up here, this is going to be a dedicated, smart, hard-working city council, and I'm looking forward to working with them. Regarding our colleagues, our outgoing city council, so one last time, Councilmember Caressi, I'm going to throw out a quote, but I'm going to break from tradition, and this is actually from DC Comics, not Marvel, but is the only time I will do it. "You've made a difference. A lot of times it wasn't huge. It may not have even been visible, but it matters just the same. Thank you to each of you for your service. Each of you brought something different to this job, different lived experiences, different areas of expertise, different ways of working. Sometimes that drove me a little crazy, but that's okay. And you also had many things in common, your dedication, hard work, and sense of responsibility to serve the members of our community. You have each done amazing things during your tenure on the council. Some of those actions were visible and others were not, but all of them matter. To Councilmember Mail, you have fundamentally changed elections in our city. 16 and 17-year-olds can now vote, and we have switched our elections to be in sync with state and federal elections to increase voter engagement and turnout. Your service on the council since 2011 has positioned the city well to be on the forefront of environmental sustainability by having our own sustainability manager and a comprehensive sustainability action plan." And I have to say, when I first got on the city council as a representative from Ward 3, Councilmember Mail has set the bar so high on community engagement by sending out his weekly updates, because not only did he tell people what was on the agenda for our council meetings, but provided analysis for residents of what the council was doing. So I tried to, when I was on Ward 3, keep up with him, but I just want to thank him for all of that and wish him a happy birthday again. So thank you. Councilmember Schultz, "In your time on the council, your focus on ensuring the livability of our community and economic development has shown through all these years. We are thankful to you that we have in place a solid noise ordinance and a way to deal with vacant properties, but as you noted, we have still a ways to go on that. Thank you for bringing your years of experience and knowledge as a planner and economic development professional, as, as well as your work with small businesses. We have been fortunate to have your service since, since 2009." And I want to say also thank you to Nancy so much. One of the pleasures of doing this job was not only to gain to know my colleagues, but also their partners as well, so thank you. And finally, to Councilmember Caressi. "First and foremost, I must thank you for your sense of humor and your straightforwardness. You remind us all to laugh, and most importantly, to laugh at ourselves. You have stood up for what you believe in and called out hypocrisy when it could have been easier to turn away. From our first action on the city council, having a resolution to welcome Syrian refugees, to making sure that we paused and rethought that library renovation, you have brought so much to our meetings and deliberation. Thank you so much." And as with Councilmember Schultz, I have to say the best part of getting to know you is actually getting to know your family, Lila and Leo, and they better come to council meetings after this, even though you're not here. So with that, I'd just like to again say thank you to my colleagues who are retiring this year, and welcome to my new colleagues, and looking forward to working with everyone. All right, now we have resolutions recognizing the contributions of our outgoing colleagues. The first is a resolution recognizing Councilmember Mail. Oops, wrong one. I'll just read this. "It's a resolution expressing appreciation to Tim Mail for his service as Tacoma Park Ward 2 council member. Whereas Tim Mail was elected to the council in 2011 to represent Ward 2, and whereas Councilmember Mail strove to make significant changes to the city's charter and policies for the betterment of Tacoma Park, and whereas Councilmember Mail led the changes to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in local elections and to move the city's election cycle to be in sync with state and federal elections to increase voter turnout. And whereas Councilmember Mail pushed to have a well-funded, dedicated budget for ongoing energy sustainability efforts, and whereas Councilmember Mail advocated to lower the city's real property tax rate while increasing programs for energy efficiency improvements as ways to keep homeownership more affordable in Tacoma Park, and whereas Councilmember Mail was tireless in informing and consulting with residents of Ward 2 through his blog on issues coming before the city, and whereas Councilmember Mail is retiring to pursue other activities, and whereas the city, the service of Councilmember Mail has been a great benefit to the city and the community of Tacoma Park. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park hereby appreciates and salutes the service of Tim Mail as Tacoma Park Ward 2 council member and wishes him Who would like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Dibala moves. Councilmember Siemens, seconds. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Awesome. All right, next we'll go to Councilmember Schultz. "This is a resolution expressing appreciation to Frederick Schultz. Whereas Frederick Schultz was elected to the council in 2009 to represent Ward 6, and whereas Councilmember Schultz advocated for economic development efforts in Ward 6 and throughout the city by supporting the Purple Line, being active in the Tacoma Langley Commercial Development Authority, and encouraging efforts to support small businesses. And whereas Councilmember Schultz was concerned about problem properties in Ward 6 and throughout the city and proposed various ways to reduce the number of and negative impacts of vacant properties. And whereas Councilmember Schultz, through addressing noise complaints in Ward 6, spurred the reconstruction of the Noise Control Board so as to have a mechanism to handle noise complaints. And whereas Councilmember Schultz was a strong supporter of meeting the needs of city staff and was particularly affected and concerned when the city was forced to make painful staff layoffs during the Great Recession. And whereas Councilmember Schultz is retiring to pursue other activities, and whereas the service of Councilmember Schultz has been a great benefit to the city and the community of Tacoma Park. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park hereby appreciates and salutes the service of Frederick Schultz as Tacoma Park Ward 6 council member and wishes him well." Who would like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Circe, second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, oh, any comment or question? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, the resolution passes. Final resolution of the evening. Resolution expressing appreciation to Rizwan Rizzi Caressi. "Whereas Rizzi Caressi was elected to the council in 2015 to represent Ward 3, and whereas Councilmember Caressi moved quickly to help make Tacoma Park a welcoming community for refugees by sponsoring the resolution to welcome Syrian refugees as the first action of the new council in 2015. And whereas Councilmember Caressi noted his Muslim faith in discussions of the importance of embracing the diverse family of Tacoma Park through the particularly divisive and national elections of 2016 and its aftermath. And whereas Councilmember Caressi definitely handed the intense community discussion regarding the future of Tacoma Junction and shared his independence of thought on the matter. And whereas Councilmember Caressi would speak of the interest of new, younger families in Tacoma Park and worked to ensure that city plans and policies, including the plans for an enlarged and renovated Tacoma Park library, would help meet their needs. And whereas Councilmember Caressi is retiring to pursue other activities, and whereas the service of Councilmember Caressi has been a great benefit to the city and the community of Tacoma Park, now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park hereby appreciates and salutes the service of Rizzi Caressi as Tacoma Park Ward 3 council member and wishes him well." Who would like to move that? Councilwoman Costi, Coste, oh my goodness, sorry. Second, Councilmember Siemens. Any comments?
Love it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Nope. Resolution passes. And that is it for the first meeting of this city council. We will adjourn to cake and refreshments and lunch. Oh, we'll take one picture, yep. We'll take one picture.
I'm reading like that. Reading so much, I didn't like it.
Yeah. Oh, is that what she wants to do? Okay.